Workshop and Port St. Joe City Commission. And this time, I'd like to thank everyone that's here tonight for coming out. I'm sure everyone knows what we're here tonight. We're here to discuss an interlocal agreement between the county and the city that would allow for the current downtown redevelopment agency to sunset at times it's supposed to sunset. And then we will have a working relationship with the county where money can be spent and if we want to. This is not a plan to do away with helping out downtown area. We're still going to be getting some money. I'm still sure that this money will be used where it's needed, whether that be downtown or wherever. But we're not excluding anyone, and that is why we're here tonight. Now, this time, set the ground rules on speakers. You have a three minute. To get a second three minutes, you need a motion and a second. Then you can have an additional three minutes. At that time, I want to open it up to the public if people just hold up time.
Mayor, Commissioner Lowery wanted everybody to know that he was in DC today. Wanted everybody to know he won't be at the meeting today or tomorrow because he is up there with county staff in reference to the disaster relief bill.
All right, so if someone in the audience would like to speak, if you'll stand up, I'll recognize you. Is anybody in the audience who would like to speak? See anything that we're here to discuss tonight?
Mayor, I can add some updates.
Okay, you have the full?
I know at the last meeting, did everybody hear me?
No.
How about now? Somebody turned me off. Okay, so I went back to the county and evidently county staff had a meeting with some of our citizens, and they had brought forth a couple other additions to this agreement that kind of sweetened the pot a little bit. As far as the fire protection, in this agreement, it says that upon execution, the city agrees in kind to extend its fire protection services from City of Port St. Joe to the unincorporated communities of Oak Grove, as well as in the form of mutual aid as primary backup to Gulf County, Florida, and the unincorporated communities of Jones Homestead and Simmons Value. The way I read that, Jim, tell me if I'm wrong. We already provide primary in Oak Grove.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And so instead of acquiring Jones Homestead and Simmons Value as a full-time where the responders, we will just be backup in those areas. That was a change. The second change was that, starting in 2024, which is the year after our last payment from the county, there will be a creation of a city improvement fund that will be funded by both the city and the county. First year baseline set at $50,000 apiece will be put into the city improvement fund with increases each year thereafter for 10 years in the increased amount to match the increase in ad form tax value of the entire city. So those are two new additions that bring the total without any increase up to about 1.9 to 2 million dollars in this agreement. And that is, that's what's happened. That's new since last time.
At this time, Commissioner Langston, do you have anything to add?
No, I'd just like to say that not only concern, it was not hurting anything on doing on Reed Avenue downtown area within that block. It didn't have anything to do with that. My thing was we could allocate the money to different areas of City of Port St. Joe. That was my thing with this agreement. We could use this money to put in other areas of the city. It wasn't trying to hurt the business owners on Reed Avenue or anything like that. That was my.
Commissioner Hoffman? Yeah, I've got a couple things. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
I'm kind of a numbers guy, so I think it's fair that we discuss the numbers and how the numbers changed a little bit. I read in the newspaper where it said, gave a figure of, I believe, 4.4 million. That's incorrect, and I'd like the record to show that the actual number, based on a 2.5% growth, only starting in 2025. In other words, no growth from now until 2025. And then after 25, we calculated 2.5% growth, which I think is actually very fair. The total amount that would be collected is 11,380,000. So let's make sure that we have the numbers right when we do the comparison. The other thing as far as numbers, like Commissioner Ashbrook just brought up, the numbers that we were given initially on the original proposal was $500,000 less than where we are today, correct?
That's correct.
So what that told me was the workshop alone, just having the workshop. So for the commissioners that voted in favor of the workshop, they generated $500,000 additional funding to the city. So that needs to be noted, that the county is willing to pay more money. And you've heard me say, from the start of this, I feel like my job is to get the best deal possible for the city. So while we were talking, while I was looking at the new offer, I wanted to go back and remind everyone that the reason that, or the reason I heard Commissioner Ashbrook state as to why he felt like we should take an offer and not just extend was, and I understand his train of thought. His train of thought was, well, we need money upfront. We need money now. And then I asked our staff, have we ever in our last several years not been able to supply the matching funds? Because the train of thought was that the grants have to have matching funds. Some of them do. And the answer from the city staff was, no, we've never been in a predicament where we didn't have the money to match the funds. And then I asked, well, do you predict us to be in that position in the near future, next five to 10 years? The answer was no. We then discussed having, I believe it was $5 million in contingency fund. So let's refresh our memory as to what brought us here today and why we're considering an offer from the county to buy the city out in extending the renewal or having the renewal and seeking another 30 years. Well, we got the 500,000 added to the initial, so I'm glad that we do have some kind of indication they're willing to pay more. And then what I wanted to do was, I think it's fair to find out, what has the Reed Avenue CRA done in the past several years, and what are they planning on doing in the future? Because if you're going to look at a project, you have to decide, well, has it been affected or has it not been affected? Bill Kennedy is the one that can tell us what they've done in the past, what they plan on doing in the future. And before we get to Bill, and before I ask Bill to go over a few things that we've accomplished, I think it's fair to say that the two items that I personally get asked about when we talk about Reed Avenue, number one is always going to be parking. Where do we park? There's people here today that have asked me that question. I've been frustrated with parking. So, you know, I realize that the CRA has actually, and we've discussed it here as both the city commission and being part of the other board, we've discussed and identified two lots that we're looking at in the future and possibly purchasing. So the other item that, and I guess I'll steal Bill's thunder, is the bathroom project. A lot of people say, we need a bathroom. We need public restrooms for the business owners when they have people and festivals and stuff. And that's another item that we can talk about. But before I ask Bill to give a breakdown on where we are and what we've done with the money, I do have a question for our attorney. And I think this is probably the most important question of the entire workshop. What I have struggled with over the last few months while I was learning about the CRA and tried to figure out what a CRA was, sometimes it's called a DRA, I did a lot of research. And I quickly realized I was very confused when it came to the MLK CRA versus the Reed Avenue CRA. So I started asking people that knew a lot more about it than me, are those two joined at the hip? Are they on the same vine? Can one survive without the other? Well, I was given multiple answers. Some say if we allow the Reed Avenue CRA to sunset, to die, it has no effect at all to the MLK CRA. I don't believe that to be the truth any longer. I believe the facts are now that if we do let this CRA sunset, the MLK CRA will not survive. Because, and we got a map, I think Bill shows us, even on the map itself, it shows it as the expanded area. So the more information I was getting on this is to say that the second part of the Reed Avenue CRA was to expand the area. It's not a standalone CRA, I don't believe. But I would like Adam, our city attorney, to weigh in on that, or if you need time, I understand. But before we move any further, I think we would all agree, the last thing we want to do is hurt the MLK project. There is a lot of things planned in the very near future in that MLK zone. And if indeed it turns out to be tied directly to the original CRA, then I think we would be doing injustice to the entire city of St. Joe with any deal whatsoever from the county. So if you would, can you speak on that?
Yes, Commissioner Hoffman, can I be heard? Commissioner Hoffman, this issue, and I have before me right now Resolution Number 09-06, which was the creation of the expansion area as it's defined inside the resolution. As reading through this, it appears that the, what we commonly refer to as the North Port St. Joe CRA is a misnomer. It is one CRA. Therefore, the board at any point wanted to enter into an agreement with the county for the dissolution, but wanted to maintain the North Port St. Joe as we know it, the expansion area as it's defined, and I'll refer to it as the expansion area to try to differentiate. Expansion area is the same. All we did was say, this was the boundary, now this is the boundary. Would have to be addressed in the agreement to port to survive.
So if we took the agreement that they have made the offer of the interlocal agreement, and we allowed the Reed Avenue, downtown Reed Avenue CRA to sunset, die on the vine, then if no other action was taken with the county, then we would be killing the existence of the MLK North Port St. Joe CRA.
Commissioner, my understanding of your question is that you accept the offer that is on the table from the county, that the expansion area will survive and without modification? And my answer is no, but I would ask for a little grace in that this issue was just brought to my attention not too long ago. But from reading through this Resolution Number 09-06, the north expansion area and what we refer to as, well, what we seem to refer to as the core of the CRA are all one. So unless there's a modification to this agreement, the only, there's only one CRA inside the City of Port St. Joe. So does that, if I say there's only one CRA, does that?
That makes it crystal clear in my mind. And I appreciate it.
Now, I would like the opportunity to look at that further.
Right, yeah.
From my initial review of this resolution and the documents contained and how it's marked up with the Port St. Joe redevelopment plan, it appears that there's only one CRA. And as such, if the only CRA is sunsetted, that would apply to the only CRA.
Right. And I just want to make sure that the other commissioners and the mayor, it's crystal clear on that, that if you take the deal, you're not killing one CRA, you're killing both. And, you know, I spent a lot of time with what I consider a counter to their counter, because in my world, you never, ever take the first offer. And we just learned the 500,000 lesson on that. So I was spending all this time on preparing my next counter, and then, like our attorney, just found out today that they're tied together. And to be honest with you, I don't even feel comfortable with presenting my counter to the counter and going through how much money I would feel more comfortable with, knowing that I was going to hurt North Port St. Joe at the level that it will hurt them. So I appreciate you telling me what we had. And Bill, if you want to talk about where we have spent the money, I think it would be fair to do that.
Bill, come on up.
Just a moment. Between now and noon tomorrow, which is very limited to the office hours, on call-in time, I will try and follow up with some of the situation as well.
Bill Kennedy, I'm the CRA director, DRA director. That CRA/DRA thing, it is a CRA is what it is. For some reason, ours created was a DRA, downtown redevelopment agency versus a community redevelopment agency. Anyway, it's the same thing.
Right.
Let me start by saying that we have a very thick, comprehensive plan. The state recommends that you update that plan about every five or six years. And I think this is only going to be the, this was going to be the third update. So I'll talk about what we have done, and then I'll say that the plan for the next 30 years was a comprehensive development plan. We know a few things we had targeted for that process, and I can tell you about a few of them. But over the expansion or the extension period, or the planning of the extension, those plans will be further detailed and discussed and had public hearings or two, talked to the general public and the business owners. But I've been there about four years now, and a lot of work has happened before I got there. I think some of the most important projects were the City Commons Parking Lot, the Farmer's Market Area gazebo. That was additional parking for downtown. The Dr. Joe Parking Lot on Williams Avenue. We may have that across from Dr. May's office. And also, one of the biggest ones was the Billy Joe Rich Parking Lot, and it had a deck for Hurricane Michael. But getting that cleaned back up as best we can now. But that's three projects right there to my parking issues. If you don't think we have a parking problem, you're not spending much time downtown. And I think we do have a parking issue. Other than that, other projects we've done most recently was the reconstruction of Reed Avenue, which was a big project. It wasn't just a resurfacing, it was reconstruction. We've spent money on the Gateway Arch at Fourth Street. That's gotten a lot of attention, I think. Also, we had the sign Bird Street 98 that helps people find downtown. Primarily, again, we have a comprehensive plan, but primarily our goal and mission is to help the downtown any way we can, whether it's parking or to help with getting people into downtown, the signage, anything we can do with the SOD grants. We've gotten some negative exposure with the SOD grants. But the SOD grants have been very successful. It's helped a lot of people that couldn't afford to add awnings or signage. Some could, some couldn't. We try to treat everyone the same. And if they qualify, make application for a SOD grant, and they apply, and they stay in guidelines, we try to help them out. We've also tried to connect the downtown waterfront to downtown, I'm sorry, the waterfront to downtown. We built the great promenade down to the lighthouse. We've helped the lighthouse, relocated the lighthouse before I got there, of course. We've remodeled the keeper's quarters. We've added parking down by the keeper's quarters. We've improved Core Park, that's in our district. We have plans for the restrooms. That's one of my biggest requests, has probably been the restrooms on Reed Avenue, because a lot of plumbing is very bad, some of those restaurants and whatnot, shops, had to turn people away that want to use the restroom. So it's been a high requested item on our, we actually have a contract now to do that this year. Again, anything that helps our downtown, the improved looks of it aesthetically, that's what we kind of focus on.
Well, would you explain the actual boundaries? Because I have had some people tell me, you need to focus more than just Reed Avenue. And I understand that. And then when I talk to you about, you know, the mission and where you go, you know, talk about how far it actually goes away from Reed, away from the water, and how you're looking at projects in that neighborhood next?
Anyone like a map? I've got a few maps to show. Kind of small, wear glasses. Yeah, I'm glad you asked that, Commissioner Hoffman, because I heard Mr. Langston said earlier, and first of all, our budget, our tenth collection budget for the last three years was, I got it written, $244,000 in '16, $250,000 in '17, and $275,000 in '18. So that lets you know, we have a limited budget. We try to do as much as we can. We try to leverage as much as we can. Grants have kind of dried up in the last few years. I see them coming back. But it's tough to rebuild Reed Avenue when your total yearly budget is $250,000.
Right, well, was that project?
$203,000.
So that pretty much took the year's worth of money.
And we basically agreed with the city to pay it back in two installments. We've already paid one installment, next installment's due next year. But generally speaking, the boundaries, the original PSGRA boundaries are Highway 71, right down the center of the median, all the way down to Frank Pegg Park, and goes up to Garrison Avenue, and that's where Pristine Pools is located. It encompasses Pristine Pools and goes back to First Street. And from First Street, it goes down, it does include the CVS, I'm not quite sure how this happened. It does include the CVS, but does not include Wiggly, but does include McDonald's. You can see on the map, you see a little box out around McDonald's on that map.
So it's a lot more property and property owners affected in this area than just Reed Avenue?
Very much so. And again, before I got here, I think that my predecessors kind of focused on the main downtown, and I understand completely why. Most of your active businesses are three blocks, basically. But there's a lot of projects we could undertake, all the way to Pristine Pools in that whole area. And then the expansion area, where you see on the map, the yellow outline, the expansion area is much, much larger than the original.
That's pretty much the whole area of North Port St. Joe, correct?
That's correct. Includes Bridgeport, and now it's down 71, instead of turning on Garrison Avenue, you're still going east or northeast down 71 to include Bridgeport. And then it comes back into, takes in Washington, Jim, and the whole area.
So if we allow this Reed Avenue CRA to die, then the entire area covered on the map, the expansion area, which is every house, every block, and every business in North Port St. Joe, they would lose the possibility of funding.
That's the way I understand it as well, same time, Mr. Your attorney.
Which I'll remind everyone, is based on your numbers of only 2.5% growth starting in 2025 is $11.3 million.
I think those are concerning to this.
I appreciate it. I appreciate the work you have done and the committee that you've done. I think we have definitely had a lot done. I wish I could say that I was a part of that, but in reality, I've only been around here a few months doing this. But you've done it for, what, five years?
It's been about four years, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of projects in four years' time. It really is. So I appreciate what you've done.
I appreciate that. And just to let everyone know, we have ordered new street signs for Reed Avenue, Williams Avenue, 71 to First Street, and I was wondering about how those have been looking, so those are coming as well. Is there any questions? Any questions from the public?
Well, the one thing I think is fair to mention, because it's a project, may not be a big money project, but you're also looking at a pole bar and a fish cleaning table and all that next to the boat landing in Port St. Joe. And that, you know, I heard somebody a while back say, and I have a lot of respect for this person, very, very wise, I think, but at first they said, well, Scott, it's not fair because that money, you know, it just goes down to Reed Avenue. And I said, well, let's talk about that. And I asked that person, I said, do you eat on Reed Avenue? Have you ever been down and had beer or ate dinner or whatever? Well, yeah. I said, well, the road you drove down, you were able to benefit from the CRA. I said, so you can't look at it as it's money's being spent only to benefit that area. That area is a big part of our city. So if you go and watch your boat and then decide you want to clean fish or chuck scallops or whatever, and we have that table there, well, you benefited from it. It's the same if we go to something that the county supplies. I've gone to retirement parties at Honeyville. Well, I pay tax to the county as well, so it wouldn't be fair for me to point the finger at the Honeyville community and say, well, I don't appreciate y'all spend all that money up there. Well, that just doesn't whole work. And after, you know, talking about it and discussing, this person quickly saw that there is a benefit to the entire community of Port St. Joe. So I think you have to weigh that without just, you know, having an opinion to it and thinking that, you know, it's not a fair system. It's not a perfect system, by no means, but I think we would be crazy even with an upgraded, modified offer from the county. The money is too far away, 2 million versus 11 million. And then the fact to find out today, we're crippling a big part of our city, North Port St. Joe, if we move forward with this dream. So I appreciate what you've come up with.
Mr. Kennedy, may I have a copy of the map, please?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to say so.
Thank you.
I understand everything about this area, and it's been great to me and my family. We love, I love to go down there and be comfortable riding on the roads too. But the thing that I'm saying is, okay, we've had, what, 30 years to do what we have to do in this area. Why can't we just take this, some of this money and distribute it to the whole community, to better the whole community instead of in just this one block? And Mr. Bill has been, he did a great job. He's been doing a great job, but let's look at the north side. We have Bridgeport, we have new apartments. This thing that could be done in those areas, not just MLK. Let's look over on Highway, Industrial Road over there. I think that's in the yellow, Industrial Road. There's a lot of businesses over there. I mean, there's some things that could be done over there with some money. So that's the only thing I'm thinking about. It's not that I'm upset or mad because we're using money on Reed Avenue. I understand that's a lot of, that's where tax-based money is coming from. That's where a lot of these tax money is coming from. And it's beautiful down there. But let's look at the big picture and try to take this money and do other things to our community with it. That's what my thing is.
I just want to weigh in for just a moment, just to let everybody know where I'm at. I'm a downtown business person myself. Not now, because my business doesn't have a roof, but as soon as I get back in, I'm coming back downtown. I want downtown to look nice. And some people I know, they don't trust the county, they're kind of silly for trusting the county. Well, I just want us to work together for the better of these citizens that are in this town. They are doing things right now, the county or the city, that you may not even know about. Our police department, they've been given a free place, a free place to stay, the city don't cost us a dime, the county provided that. Our evidence room, the roof was leaking, evidence was getting rained on. Michael Helen had them build a vault in a room out at the county for us to put stuff in. They want to help the city, they don't want to hurt us. Yeah, and again, you know, they've been against this from the start, they're wanting this when the sun's in. And regardless of what anybody says, we would have to fight the county. Actually fight them, they go to court, who knows, and then where we're in. It doesn't sound bad taste to my mind. And it's, you know, I understand the money, but sometimes it's not all about the money, it's what can be done with a working relationship. Something this city and county hasn't had, when I came on in two thousand and eleven, some of the commissions wouldn't even meet with the city because, well, I just won't get into that. But we need to work with our county. And I'm sorry, that's the way I feel, but like I say again, I want everybody to understand that regardless of how we vote on this thing all night, we're not abandoning Reed Avenue. So your downtown merchants, there's going to be some playgrounds still that you can benefit from. It may change a little bit from what it's been in the past, but again, we're not going to forget you. No, we not want to forget you. And as I say, a working relationship with the county at this point in time means a lot to this city. And we not been able to piggyback with them on a lot of things, on Hurricane Michael, I don't know what we did, Jim, maybe we piggybacked with them on a lot of things? But we had to, they went, well, I don't want to help the city, they want to hurt the city. So just so you know, I met everybody, and I say, I'm a downtown business merchant, and I want downtown to look at the goodies that everyone looks. But sometimes I look at things like, how many times can you plant a tree, pull it up, plant another tree, pull it up, plant another tree? How many times can you do a flower bed? Ten, fifteen times, it's not repeating itself. Let's fix, know what we want, and let's fix and get it fixed right, the curvings. I mean, what we got down there now looking great, I don't like trees. I'd rather have palm trees down there myself. And Bill is talking about putting some down there. And there again, you spend the taxpayers' dollars on things, and they say, you know, you're ripping it up, oh, well, that's not exactly what we want. And, you know, I think we can get a lot done for the city without having a CRA.
Mayor, I have one comment, and again, my intent was never to do away with the expansion area. We were, I think we'd all been told from the beginning, we kind of treated it like two separate CRAs. And every time I had conversations with the county staff about this, they said, we don't care what we do with that CRA. And so I don't know if the county is aware of this or not, but as it stands today, I wouldn't support this if we did away with that expansion area, and if that means somehow redrafting this to say, instead of sunsetting, to have an extension for thirty years that would include the expansion area, maybe even some parts of the original area that have, that still have shown some blank. This is new to me, I've always heard of it referred to as two CRAs, in fact, there's resolutions been passed by our board that said one CRA can loan money to the other CRA, it's exact language, to the tune of twenty dollars a dollar. So I think even our attorneys may have been confused way back then. So I think that we do need to have our attorney take another look at this, because every time that I spoke with the county, this was an issue.
No, I didn't think, I didn't think too. I always thought it was too, and it kind of surprised me tonight too, so, but, let's see, I guess.
Anyone now, or go back to the public, if you want to come up, just right in front of me. Whoever, I'm looking all around, trying to see people. And if you please, would you write your name now, state your name for us?
My name is Lorinda Angel. I have been associated with these, the Port St. Joe Redevelopment Agency for a number of years. And to your question, Commissioner Langston, the money that is the tax dollars within that boundary, that original boundary, they can't be spent in the other area. We're not going through a resolution process, which you can do through the board, but you have to do that resolution process, just so you know. The other thing was, and Bill was very, he talked about the projects that the CRA has done over the years while he was there. I would like to also point out that the CRA takes care of the expense for the landscaping along ninety-eight, along seventy-one, and downtown, as well as landscaping at the two parking lots, they take care of and maintain those, that comes out of those funds. The CRA also, in conjunction with the Florida, the Highway Department, Department of Transportation, worked on the project for Highway ninety-eight. We opened up all of the stormwater ducts underneath, one of which was filled with concrete, and that one, that one now ends, empties out into, they call it the Sandy Hills Pond over in Port Park, and the other one is on the other side. So that was all, all of the paperwork, as well as the lights, everything else around the actual pavement, okay? The CRA also used its leverage, if you will, to get one of the few shovel-ready jobs under Mr. Obama's program, and they were able to get three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to finish up that project in one year, as opposed to having to spread it out. So leveraging funds, when the funds are available, is a very important part of the CRA dollars. And as Bill said, they had dried up over the last couple of years statewide, but they seem to be opening up quite a bit more. There was also Reed Avenue project, which re-curved everything, redid the sidewalks, and also planted trees and stuff like that. So there have been quite a few other projects along the way. And while it has been thirty years, you know, since nineteen ninety, the first fifteen years, there wasn't any money to be had, because there was no increase in the tax base. So that's, that's another thing, while, while it seems like a long time, it's only really half that time, okay? So I just wanted to point those things out.
I want to say something, I didn't say that the money couldn't be spent anywhere else. I didn't say that.
And you said you want, why it couldn't be spread out?
Right.
They can't, it's a, it's a process of a resolution.
I understand, ma'am.
Yeah, so.
I just was, just wanted to mention, I didn't, I didn't say, I didn't say that it couldn't be spent.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right. The other thing was, I'm sorry, there's one more point, there was a path, how they chose the projects, there were a number of workshops, and everything was prioritized by members of the community, people from all over the city who came together and put together what projects we needed, okay? And just about all of that very first set of projects has been taken care of.
Thanks, ma'am.
Someone keep them to their call. You got it, Chief?
She was four seconds away.
All right.
If they'll speed things up, I'll make a motion at this time, at any point you can have an additional three minutes, that would be my motion.
Do we have a second?
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Come on up.
So what, you get three?
Get three.
I believe someone else can give you their three minutes, and then they would not be allowed to speak, so you keep that in mind.
Now, if you want a group, someone to speak for a group, we'll allow somebody to speak for a group and give them six minutes, but you want, will they ever give you three minutes?
I don't think we have groups here tonight.
Station, Amy Rogers.
Amy Rogers, I have some concern, and I've been working very closely with CRA when it was Downtown Development Agency, and I followed it when it first got started with the merchants, St. Joe Merchants in nineteen seventy-five when it started. But watching it along the way, and I seen it from the beginning and all the way in the middle, the changes, and not complete, I'm just saddened that the fact that you wanted to dissolve it, and we have not finished it, because on that CRA, once you look at CRA, it's more than just the business side, it, to create a CRA that has to be a lot of areas, and it, at the end of the beginning, there's the streets that was made to housing, there's needed some work on some housing. And it started, I think, from First Street all the way to houses that was on First Street, one or two was there for people to live in, but it went all the way over to Fourth Street. And what I'm saying, that here's a component that we never have attacked in doing the work of the CRA, and we did many of the good things in the community, but we have not attacked the housing. And when we got, worked so hard in two thousand and three, and six, and seven, to expand the CRA, to include the entire Northport St. Joe, we know right then, that there'd be some more work on houses to be improved on in Northport St. Joe through the CRA. And now, you know, I'm just kind of saying about, just a thought from the county to want to propose this money, you know, how is it sure that we're going to get that money? But my question to the attorney is that, can that be done? I mean, do they make a, you know, a proposition like this? I mean, is it their duty to work with the entire county with their money, is this money that they can have an option, or they bargain with? If we do this, we'll get this?
The county, and there's other projects that the county's allocated funds to the city of Port St. Joe, or to the city of Weewall, the county can certainly allocate its funds, within the purpose of state statute.
But you know what I'm saying, I know they can allocate the funds, but can it, is it, you know, is it right to say, if you, the city, and in this agreement, this is what you're going to do with this county money?
Ma'am, I cannot, I've given you a legal, I've given you a legal answer, I cannot answer what I assume would be a moral question of whether it's right or wrong, I cannot answer that, and I don't have the ability to answer that.
Well, pretty much, okay, what about, I mean, isn't that like their duty to help with, serve the county completely? We just said, isn't that what the county's responsibility is to help us?
Well, I can speak on that. The county is projected to pay the city seven point six million dollars if we renew the extension. Seven point six million. So it's easy for me to understand why the county is really not excited for the city to renew. They don't want to pay seven and a half million, they'd rather offer us two point zero nine million and buy us out. It's clear why, if I was on the county side, I would, I'd be trying to get rid of it too. It's hard for me to understand how anyone with the city would be going, moving towards getting rid of it, but not the county side, it's just money.
That's what I thought New Politics was saying, that so much is undone, we've done great things, but there's so many things that could better the community that we have not completed yet. And I feel like that, you know, that agreement needs to be revised, you know, it needs to be revised, we need to come together on some things, but to dissolve it, I don't think that would be best interest of the city or the county.
And that's the reason that the state of Florida allows cities to renew, that very reason, you just, you just pointed out a great point. If the state of Florida thought, well, we'll give you thirty years, and in thirty years, you're done, they wouldn't allow us to renew it, but they know that the cities are ever-changing, they're growing. Things that were thirty years ago now need to be touched up or replaced. We just went through a hurricane, we've got a lot of places in that area, and to include the expanded area of Northport St. Joe, there's plenty of places we could spend the money on.
Thanks, ma'am. Someone else? Come on up.
I'm Barbara Redcliff. My question is, when does the current CRA expire?
Eighteen months.
Okay. In May, we may have a different set of commissioners sitting on this board. So when are you planning, this board planning to vote on this agreement?
They plan to vote on it at our last city commission meeting.
Right, but then we have the workshop, so now are we planning to vote on this tomorrow?
I would hope not.
But is that the plan?
It's only agenda.
It's on the agenda, so with the potential that forty percent of this board could be different in May, you're going to make, you're going to vote when you have plenty of time left to do this right, if you're going to do it, and then two of you could be gone. And you have set a path for the community, you know, that we're stuck with, when you're potentially will be gone, so why does this have to be voted on and done so quickly? Why can't we wait till after the may elections for the city?
That's a very good question. And actually, it's three seats that are coming up, not two.
One, two, three.
Oh, that's one, sorry. So sixty percent of the board could be out.
Could be out.
So I think, I think you guys, you know, as they said, don't rush to judgment.
All right. Anyone else? Stand up. Come on.
I yield my three minutes to Dr. May.
My name's Dusty May, I've lived in Port St. Joe my whole life. I love this community, and I've had the best of my life, and the life of my wife and children in it. And I want to thank each one of you guys for serving our town, and especially for allowing us, citizens of Port St. Joe, to be heard about this important issue of downtown redevelopment. And we appreciate the opportunity you have provided us to participate in our actual representative government, and we thank you for that. Most of us remember our Sunday School lessons on Jacob, and he saw, when he saw the older brother sold his birthright for a bowl of hot stew. Throughout the ages, the first thing farmers did when harvesting was to put back a percentage of the crop for next year's planting. Don't eat the seed corn has been invaluable advice from the beginning of recorded history. We all know people who have foolishly sold property for immediate gain now, as opposed to planning for the future, and that would be me. The human tendency to sell opportunities of tomorrow for immediate gain today is something we all struggle with. It's not easy to sacrifice immediate gain today for the promise of an uncertain future, but history tells us time and time again to be smart. Don't sell yourself short, don't eat the seed corn. Many of us grew up playing Monopoly, you never won by selling, you won by developing long-term income. As I look at PSJ today, and this is especially relevant after the hurricane, and I assess our economic, and I assess our economic future, I see several very big absences. The paper mill's gone, silver chem's gone, the railroad's gone, basic's gone, MTI's gone, telephone company, a very small vestige to what it used to be. If you lived there long enough, you remember the good old days, we didn't have to worry about all this tourism stuff. We had economic engines here, and they provided. Unfortunately, or fortunately, those guys are gone now, and they're not coming back. So what do we have to work with? Well, we got this very nice town called Port St. Joe, we have our proximity to St. Joe Bay, and the beaches and surrounding waters, and we got these great people that live there. So if our economic engine is tourism, and making Port St. Joe a great place to relocate, to relocate to and to live, what do we need to do to improve and encourage tourism and relocation and quality of life for us residents? The first thing I notice when I go to a community, and I go to a lot of them here in Florida, and is how much attention is being given to the little things, because I believe that any business or community that is taking care of the little things is also responsible enough to take care of the big stuff. I've heard the arguments that DRA money is spent on frivolous things like street decorations or flowers, but tourists and residents like attractive streets, we like foot traffic, we like landscaping, I mean, those are the things that make a city cool. We like farmer's markets and having things to do downtown, all these little things that make a community beautiful. or flowers. But tourists and residents like attractive streets. We like foot traffic, we like landscaping. I mean, those are the things that make a city cool. We like farmer's markets and having things to do downtown. All these little things that make a community beautiful and fun are provided by DRA. You're not going to get people like the county who are worried about more bigger picture things, sewer, water, I mean, the things that they need to be worried about. These little things are critical if tourism and relocation is going to be vital. This is the purpose, or one of the main purposes of DRA. So several years ago, you gentlemen and several of y'all were on this board, dissolved the existing DRA board and took over those responsibilities for the city. I was sat right here and you made very, very strong promises that you were going to be great stewards of this very, very valuable resource. Please, gentlemen, I beg y'all, do not sell the birthright of Port St. Joe for a bowl of county hot stew.
Anyone else? Come on up.
I'm Dorian McMullin. I have a business downtown in Port St. Joe. My big question, we've talked a lot about money, we've talked about where that's going to go, how much it's going to be, whatever. Who is going to handle any of this going forward? What entity, if the CRA dissolved, there isn't a DRA anymore, who's going to take care of that? Who's going to oversee those projects and things?
Based on the proposal from the county, it says the sitting commissioners of Port St. Joe would make the decision as to spending the money that the county generated.
Would they do that, their workshops like this? Would they have, or citizens that would have an interest in these areas that could contribute to that?
I'm sure we would have a workshop, yes, ma'am. Now, that's what we said to ask me, we didn't mind having a workshop on how to spend the money, or we need help on telling us how to spend it.
Sure, that's important. I think a lot of people have a lot of ideas. I think it would be important to, you know, so is that going to be something that's going to be written in, it's going to be something that's defined that we can all see?
No, this agreement, the agreement is just between us and the county, but I personally, and I don't think I would give any disagreement for the way that it's spent would be that we don't use this money unless it's for matching grant amounts. The only reason why I would take less money upfront would be if I can match that money and turn it into a higher amount. That is my opinion, that I would propose a resolution to that effect that would say you can't spend that money unless it's a minimum of the twenty-five percent match expenditure.
I think it's important to remember that we used to have what you just described, that it was dissolved by the city and they took over with great promises to continue to do a great thing. And now, three years later, we're talking about selling it.
Well, that's my question, you know, is there, who would that be?
And I think that we need to make the point that it's easy to say, oh, we promised we'll have a workshop before we spend this money. I can tell you, this is the only workshop I've been to, and I've been on the city council now for, I guess, six or seven months. The only other workshop we've had since my tenure has been related to the hurricane. We had some emergency workshops. But if you've ever attended or watched our commission meetings, we spend your money every, twice a month, first Tuesday and the third Tuesday, we spend it and we don't have workshops. So based on past practice of the board I'm a part of, we don't really ask you what to do with the money, we're too busy spending it. So I don't think that's even worth saying that we're going to have a workshop.
Hold on, hold on, be fair, let's not say that, but to be fair, I think she's talking about money that's allocated to spend in certain areas of the city besides things that the commissioners had to vote for, vote on to spend such as lift stations, work with the city workshop, bids on those things. So let's don't say that we're just spending money without letting people know. Now, we will have, in my opinion, we will have workshops if it comes down to taking money and spending it from what the county's giving us in certain areas to help the citizens out. But as far as spending money without people knowing or without even letting them know, that's never happened.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Natalie Shofen. I don't get up here very often, but I don't understand the logic behind you taking something that's doing well, that's going forward, that's doing something for the whole county and the city and handing it off to somebody else. If you don't have time to do it, put the board back in place and let the board do it. I'm involved with Playa that comes into town, I'm involved with the theater that comes into town, I'm involved with the chamber. And the city is doing great. The DRA is doing a very good job. Why would you give it away? Does anybody have an answer? I mean, who, if they came to you with this, why did you even talk to them?
Ma'am, the only reason, and I started this, well, I didn't start this conversation, the conversation started way back ten years ago between Rex and Michael, when he left, he handed me the torch. And so I started a conversation with Michael at his request and because of the storm, and I said this, if this conversation between he and I would have happened on October ninth, it wouldn't have happened. There is a need right now, there is a need to get matching money for lift stations. You know, we talked about a five million dollar reserve, why haven't we replaced it yet? We don't have it. We need, we need some things now, and I'm not selling out for a bowl of soup, I'm selling out for a bunch of lift stations and anything else that may be damaged that needs your place by the city. And if I can take, you know, one point four, one point nine million and turn it into, you know, fourteen, then I feel like that's my, that's my thought process, is that we need things now more than we ever have before. The biggest storm in Florida's history has hit us and that was my thought process.
I understand, I understand, but, but I'm hearing that we're going to be giving eleven million. Can't we do, can't we think outside the box and do something else? Can't we make a deal with them that doesn't, they don't take this away from the city?
And I don't think we should take it away from, again, the expansion area. I just.
What about the rest of the city? I mean, the expansion area is important and we need to do what we need to do, but what about the rest of the city?
You're right, you're right, what about the rest of the city?
There was a comment made earlier, I can't remember who said it, about the priority, oh, it was Bill, that our priority is to help downtown. That's also our priority, we need to, we need to help all areas, but we can do that unencumbered, we can do it unencumbered without the statute saying you have to spend it on this or this, and if it's in the capital improvement plan of the city, the DRA can't spend the money on it. If it's been in the CIP over the last three years, it's unrestricted use.
But, but they are doing a good job, they are doing what they're supposed to be doing and you're wanting to take one piece of this county-city that's working well and break it up and not, and not have it work well again either. I don't understand the logic.
Well, and I just heard yesterday on the news, the city of Port St. Joe, and Jim, you might can speak on this, we were just awarded five hundred and eleven thousand dollars from the governor to help on the sewer and pipeline, sewer lines in the city of Port St. Joe. Several of the smaller communities were awarded money. St. Joe was awarded, I believe, five hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that was a CDVG grant that we applied for prior to the storm. And what was our match amount, was it in excess of fifty thousand dollars, I believe, on that?
The last meeting, you gave Mr. Bauster fifty thousand dollars to administer and we had a twenty-five thousand dollars.
So seventy-five thousand dollars to get that five eleven and that was asked for prior to the storm.
Right, I think it's, what was stated, you have to remember, what I said earlier was we had to go back in time to find out why are we here? Well, the reason we were here is because Commissioner Ashbrook felt like we didn't have enough contingency, enough funding to cover matching grants. Well, that's no longer the case. So why would we move forward is the next question.
I agree completely. I don't understand why you're not so saying, no, we don't want to do this right now. You know, we may look at it after, in a year, but it doesn't make any sense to me at all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, lady here.
Hello, gentlemen. David Warner, I spoke before the city commission meeting and very much opposed to this proposal. I think it's a great thing that we've been able to have this for the last twenty years, the last thirty years of the existence of it, has done some great things. A couple of things I wanted to point out that I think were missed. Bill did a great job of explaining all the things that CRA has done. One thing that's very important to me and very important, I think, to the development of Port St. Joe and what we're offering here, is the CRA provided thirty-five thousand on a match to the Port Theater group to purchase the theater. That provided a three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar return on the investment, thirty-five thousand dollars. We purchased the building, we have raised over a hundred thousand dollars, we have commitments for two more hundred thousand dollars right now towards the expansion of the theater. We're hoping to raise much more, we'll be invested directly into downtown Port St. Joe and the expansion of the culture in this community. Also, the CRA has committed fifty thousand dollars and your generosity in this board, the two other individual business owners that you have on CRA voted to commit fifty thousand dollars to a five hundred thousand dollar grant request that has been made to the state. We unfortunately have missed that grant by one project two years in a row, which was unfortunate because of the priorities in Tallahassee. This year, we're ranked number twenty-one, they, the governor's requested nine million dollars to be spent on this program. We should be funded with a nine million dollar commitment from the legislature. I'm working very hard myself personally and so is our board to make sure that gets done. That fifty thousand dollars will return a five hundred thousand dollar investment to our community. You're talking about matching dollars, maybe the theater is not your personal priority, but that money is already matching grants and in your generosity so far has generated three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. One last thing I wanted to point out, and Bill stopped when he was talking about the current CRA at McDonald's. Well, it doesn't stop at McDonald's, it goes all the way down First Street, right to the bank. Picks up Jettie Park, it picks up the Marina, it picks up Marina Cove. I just went to a Marina Cove board meeting, I'm the president of the Owners Association there. They have great plans to help fund a plan to tie in the Marina downtown, they want to help fund a study and a plan to tie in the downtown Rita Avenue, the Marina and Marina Cove to try to bring these communities back together. So don't lose sight of the fact that this current CRA that y'all are talking about getting rid of includes the Marina, which has got a huge redevelopment plan that's about to be released in about two weeks. Also, one other thing, I think Mr. Ashbrook has talked about the threats of the CRA. The bill that actually is filed in the legislature right now to potentially affect CRAs is to be heard tomorrow. First hearing in committee is tomorrow. It has numerous committee assignments references. So I'm telling you that the challenges of this bill are still great. There are a couple of things in there that are very threatening. However, I know how the legislative process works, those things are, take a lot, there's a lot that goes on between that passage, even if it doesn't pass. It's been attempted in the past, it hadn't passed, I know it's gone over my time, but first hearing is not until tomorrow. If y'all bring this thing up to vote on it tomorrow, you don't pass it without even knowing what's going on with the legislature and the CRA. So anyway, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Someone else in the mic?
Kristen McElroy Wood, we're having it. It sounds like no one here is for not moving forward with trying to continue a CRA. There's, there's no voice that has come up and said, in an interlocal agreement with the county is the way we should move. That's why we have workshops. And I think we're forgetting sometimes that, you know, you've got to listen to the voices of the people who put you in chairs. You know, I feel from, I was just sitting back there looking at the Florida statute for CRA, and there's so many things in that statute that are not in an interlocal agreement. It'd be sort of like us telling the county, why don't y'all just go ahead and abandon that TDC? Again, Florida statutes, it helps keep you in a place where it doesn't matter if you have changes in your elected official. Everybody is held to the same standard. And I think that's important, consistency, laws, statutes, they keep us all going. So I would ask, based off of what Mr. Warner just said as well, we need to stop, there's no hurry to vote us in unless you know something we don't know. That would be problematic.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would ask that Commissioner Ashbrook, who has it currently on the agenda for tomorrow's meeting, based on the information you received tonight, are you willing to remove it from the agenda?
I'd like to get it up and hear what he found out about the expansion area.
Based on the fact what we have currently, like, you know, what he has given, I consider that an opinion. Anything is subject to change. I'm just saying, based on what we know at present time, I would ask that you take it from the agenda tomorrow and take it off the agenda.
I think that we could still discuss this.
Well, I believe the reason it's on the agenda tomorrow is the plan is to vote on it tomorrow.
Well, I will make you this promise, if we don't have a resolution, the expansion area going away, that it won't be for me.
So is the answer, you'll take it off the agenda or are you going to leave it on the agenda for tomorrow?
I'm going to leave it on our agenda to discuss, continue to discuss, see if we have an update from our attorney. And if we don't have a resolution that says that that expansion area is not going away, I'm going to hear another people out of there.
So that's your only objection, is it's fact that both the DRA, that both are tied together?
Right now, right now that they are tied at hip, it looks like.
So if they weren't, then you're good with that.
Come up front, please.
Dusty May, again, I'm just trying to clarify everybody's position. So that's your only objection, David, is that, is that the two DRAs are attached together? If they were separate, you would be all for voting to go ahead and make the deal happen with the county?
That is essentially correct, with some modifications, yes.
So, and again, I got just a minute or so, I'd just like you guys to think about this long and hard. Everybody's got their own opinions, that's why we're here. If I'm from the county, believe me, this is a no wage slights account. If I'm the county, I'm thinking, let's get it done. I mean, everybody that's from the county that's made these propositions, you guys have got to be getting their backs patted by their speakers because they've done a great job of convincing you guys that it's in the city's best interest for the county to buy us out. You guys are smart guys, I'm not going to sit here and try to argue with you one way or another. I'd just like you to think about it from the county's perspective. These guys are very smart guys, they're all intelligent, they're good people, most of them are good friends of mine, doing their job for the county. That's what this is all about. Now, I know that, though, we like to think that everybody's going to pat each other on the back, we're all going to be mutual friends and I hope we can be and help each other, that's the ideal way to do business. But the fact is, the county approached you guys with this, it was their idea. I'm just asking you guys to take a step back and think, if somebody approaches you with a business deal and a lot of people are telling you, man, take a step back and just think about this for another day or two before you commit your life's fortunes to this deal. Because these guys came to you with this deal, they wrote the contract, their lawyers have done all the work, we're just sitting here kind of being told. Isn't it always a good idea if you're in that kind of a situation to take a step back and think, man, maybe I need to think about this, maybe there's something I've missed, we're human beings. I know that's the way I would feel. And I just want you guys, before tomorrow's meeting, when you're obviously going to vote on this, just give that some thought, where this whole thing came from and couldn't, it's maybe something going on that, nothing underhanded, I mean, this is, but from the county's perspective, this is a win-win. Is it really a win-win from the city's perspective? And that's what you guys are electing for, if I'm not mistaken, just the fact they're the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been, spent over an hour, I think we've heard and understood everybody that wanted to speak. There's no reason for me to be listening to people three and four times and we're talking about the same thing. I think we've accomplished what we wanted to do here tonight, we've got your input, a lot for us to think about. And I honestly believe that the two CRAs are, are separate, but I don't know that our attorney will let us know. But I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, your input is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. I need to make sure to get it.